That's clear? Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor and Commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, June 10th, 2019. The next thing on the agenda is invocation. It will be from perpetual praise and worship. We have one of the pastors there, our very own, Ms. Georgia Henderson. How are you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Good. Appreciate you being here for us.
Thank you for the invite. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain we're receiving, oh God. We just thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us each day. We ask now, heavenly Father, that you watch over our leaders tonight as they govern over business, give them your wisdom to make the right decisions for the betterment of this community, and we give you thanks in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the order of the agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
Excuse me for a second. I actually made a mistake. That's my bad. My bad. Between, after item number six, we're going to insert Mr. McElvin from the library to introduce himself to the citizens of Douglas and Coffey County. And also, we're going to do the proclamation for Flag Month with American Legion Post 515, Mr. Jerome Loving. Everybody has that noted?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize for that. At this time, I will entertain an approval of the order of the agenda with the amendments.
Sub move.
Second. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items. Charlie's gonna look a little different to the citizens out there. So, we have Mr. Mike Hudson, our utilities director, to lead us through this.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. The first gen item is review of the May 20th, 2019 minutes. Number two is discuss the fee waiver for the use of the GM with the childhood cancer group. Number three is discuss treat closure clarification. Number four is discuss and approve appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee. Number five will be discussed approval of contract with Johnny Wilkinson, DBA, WW Video Productions. Number six is discuss East Bryan Street sewer repairs. And number seven will be discussed the GMP for the utilities building and public works buildings. That is all with consent items. Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion referencing the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is work session items brought forth for discussion. Again, Mr. Hudson, lead us through it.
First work session item brought forth will be discussed appointments to the zoning Board of Appeals. That'll be brought forth by Ms. Georgia Henderson, our Community Services Director.
All right. We want to just get your permission tonight to, well, we've got to announce, excuse me, I'm sorry, that we're gonna publicize for a couple of weeks until we get an applicant to fill a vacancy that we have on the zoning board of appeals. And once we receive an applicant, we'll bring that back to you on another agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Henderson.
Mayor, the next gen item brought forth will be discussed FY '20 budget public hearing. That'll be brought forth by Tommy Harrell, our Finance Director, and then Mr. Adams will conduct the public hearing.
Thank you.
After being properly advertised, the proposed FY '20 budget of $112,350,432 is ready for a public hearing. If no objections, the FY '20 budget will be presented for adoption at the next city commission meeting, scheduled for June 27th, 2019. In connection with the FY '20 budget, we must conduct a public hearing tonight, so at this time, I will call to order a public hearing on the proposed FY '20 budget for the City of Douglas, which provides for total general anticipated revenues, $17,47,944. Total general fund anticipated expenditures, $17,47,944. Total utility fund anticipated revenues, $55,891,467. Total utility fund anticipated expenditures, $55,891,476. Special revenue funds anticipated revenues, $39,412. Total special revenue funds anticipated expenditures, $39,412. Total anticipated revenues and total anticipated expenditures for a total of $112,350,432. If there's anyone here tonight who wishes to comment on this proposed budget, please step forward, state your name and whatever comment you may have. Okay? There is no one, I'll conclude the public hearing, and then we'll have the next action on this at the next meeting on June, uh, June the...
27.
27.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all the gen items. Keep it cool.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have an amendment. We're gonna have the library, Mr. McElvin, come introduce himself and tell him, tell us about some of the things he has planned for our library. Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming.
So, we have summer reading kicking off right now, and on Mondays in the afternoon at 3:30, we have Story and Craft. And then on Wednesdays at 11 o'clock, we have our performers coming in, so we have Fiddle and Dan coming in this Wednesday. Next Wednesday, the 19th, the animals are always very popular. We're gonna have the Chihaw Animal Park come in. We also have the passes. There's a link right on our page if you go to the Satilla Regional Library website. At the very top in the menu, there's a passes link, so it's a page I put together with all the available passes that you could check out and then take your family to Jacksonville Zoo, Okefenokee, Chihaw, some of the others. And then you just need a library card to be able to come in and check them out. So, on that page, if you click any of those links, it'll take you into the catalog, and it will tell you if any of them are available or not, because you can't place them on hold.
Outstanding.
So, we're trying to be more community engagement as far as bringing people into the library, having programs that are more receptive as far as to get people to come in and reaching out to them as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr.
Feel free to come back anytime you have any updates or something brand new and exciting for our citizens. We'll always carve out a little time for you. And if you try to get in contact with our city manager or the secretary to fill out a little form, that way we can get you on there, okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Good deal. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Jerome Loving, who is a regular visitor here, representing Post 515. We're gonna do a proclamation. Well, here we go. Community proclamation, whereas in the City of Douglas and Coffey County, numerous flags have been observed as worn and unserviceable, and whereas American Legion Post worldwide working a variety of programs that support and benefits veterans, their families, and the community, and whereas the members of the American Legion Post 515 are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy, while working to make a difference in the community to rid it of worn and unserviceable flags, and whereas June is Flag Month, which is the perfect time to show patriotic pride. Look at old glory and make ready for the Fourth of July, whereas June 14th is Flag Day, and members of Post 515 are disposing of unserviceable flags. Therefore, I, Tony Falk, Mayor of the City of Douglas, Georgia, do hereby proclaim that June 14th is Flag Day, and witness whereof I have unto set my head this tenth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2019. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Ms. Bolder will contest and get you a copy. Good deal. As always, appreciate you, man. Next on the agenda, we have staff comments. Ms. Henderson?
Just a few announcements. The next residential junk drop-off day will be on Saturday, June the 15th, from 8:30 until 12 noon at the pole yard, which is adjacent to the post office. Also, continue with the community policing program. The Douglas Police Department has a pizza with the cops day coming up on June the 20th. It's Davis Wade Park. You have a flyer in front of you, but they would like to encourage the parents to come out in conjunction with the pizza. That is one of the days that our city pool has open swim. So, the only thing you have to pay for is to open swim on that day, but it will be from 5, is that right? 5 until 5:30?
Aye.
To what time? 6:30?
That's what the flyer says.
I was trying to find my four.
6:30?
You have yours, that's 6:30 to 6:30. So, that will be at the Roger Johnson Swimming Pool located on Shirley Avenue. Also, we are still publicizing that we're looking for volunteers to sign up to be on what we hope will be the Keep Douglas Beautiful chapter. We have about four citizens who have reached out and expressed the interest to be on this committee, so we just need a few more, and we're gonna keep publicizing that through the month of June before we call a meeting. But if you're interested, give our office a call at 383-0277. Just want to announce to everyone, we have revamped our website. I guess you can say we gave it a facelift. It was very much needed. Ever since we've had a website, it has not been mobile-friendly, and that is almost unheard of in these days and times. So, we encourage everyone to go to our website, cityofdouglas.com, check it out, like, let us know if you like it. If some things not functioning right, it's still in a testing stage, but you'll find a lot of the familiar things still on there, where you can sign up for the notify me for job announcements, anything with calendar events, news-related events, bids, anything when we're bidding, that's on there. And there are some job vacancies. People can still set up the profiles whenever they want to go and apply online for jobs. So, we're just trying to make it more user-friendly. And one of the other things we want to say about the website is, we're still working on it, but it's also gonna be in compliance with ADA for those with disabilities and have the listening devices. Our website will be compatible with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor and Commissioner comments. Let's start off with Mr. Moore.
Well, I don't have a lot of comments. Wanted to compliment Mike on the job he did tonight. He, uh, been practicing on it two or three days. We want to congratulate him, and we thank for the rain we've had, and we'll hope people keep praying, and we'll have some more. So, I thank you and thank you for what you do. That's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the citizens who came out this, this earlier in the week for our TAD meeting that we had with the developers and the TAD, it stands for Tax Allocation District, for the City of Douglas. And we're real excited about this potential retail development and all the things that it will bring to Douglas. So, thank you to those who came out. It was a great, Joanne Lewis again did a beautiful job explaining this and helping us understand why this is so important, why this is a once-in-a-lifetime event for us in some cases. But I want to say, let's see, we have Father's Day coming up this Sunday, don't we?
Yes, we do.
I knew you'd perk up.
Yes, we do.
I knew you'd perk right up. See, I'm speaking his language. He loves presents. He loves gifts, so, um, yes.
I'm getting him a Lowe's cart.
Happy Father's Day to many of you. If you, if you have the privilege and pleasure of having your father still around, please enjoy that time with him. It's, it's very fleeting, as I can attest, but I think that, I think that's about it. I just want to say again, thank you to everyone for the, the efforts that we're having with cleanup and everything. My husband and I go to Cordill, Georgia, often, and I see the big campaign and the push that they have there, billboards and things like that. And citizen involvement is just so key there, so important. Our residential junk drop-off days, it'd be great if we could have some youth groups and some churches or just whoever could maybe provide people with a truck. You know, we've got a lot of people who say, when I see things out and I ask them about it, they just say, "If I only had a truck, if I only had the means to get it off my property." And so, any of you, that might be a good idea for a service project this summer, just to volunteer on, on one of those days, and come before us, let us know what you'd like to do or how we can help you. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to react on Mr. Bob. Do thank the Lord for sending the rain. It had been approximately about three weeks since we had some rain, and I don't know about nobody else's grass, but my grass, as I walk over it, it began to pop, you know, when I was walking on it. But when that gray, when that rain came, seemed like it said, "Thank you, Lord, for the rain," you know, and it's already started back turning green, and we got another shower today, which is gonna help. Another thing I'll have noticed is the bypass has opened up, and those guys have done a fantastic job as far as moving our traffic. Traffic is moving good, but I do want to warn the citizens, the speed limit is 45 miles an hour. You're not on Interstate 75. Georgia State Patrol, I hope they don't get me, is making money out there on that bypass and everything. I don't know what the, what's wrong with the City of Douglas, but Georgia State Patrol is making money out there, you know, everything, because me, myself, you know, everything. You get to ride, that road rides so smooth, you know, especially going over that old pass, man, that's, that's a smooth riding. And when you know anything, you up to 60 miles an hour, you know, everything. So, citizens, be careful, because if you get caught, you gonna pay a fine. Speed limit is 45 miles an hour, so be aware of that. They even got you a warning signal out there to let you know when you come by there, 45, please slow down. But, you know, you be riding, you don't even pay that no tithes, you know, everything. Another thing is, mentioning about the junk day. Citizens, we still dumping our sofa and whatever else we do not want in our house side the street, please call the City of Douglas and find out when it's junk day, and just hold on to it until that time, because we never know when someone is riding around looking at the City of Douglas, and they see all this stuff piled outside the street, and that might, you know, give a negative to the City of Douglas, you know. So, please, ma'am, please, sir, if you have something that you do not want, we have two Saturdays out of the month that they'll cost you nothing, you know. And I'm throwing myself out here. Commissioner, send and mention about a truck.
Uh-oh.
If you don't have a truck, and if I'm available, you know...
Oh, available.
If I'm available, you know, everything, I'd be more than glad to come by and pick it up and carry it down to, you know, the pole, but just call to call me that second Saturday and the third Saturday, whatever Saturday that is that we pick it up, you know. The mother, other two Saturday, I'm not available, but Georgia got it, you know. So, that's all I have, man.
I just posted off. Commissioner Dern?
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Pearson?
Um, yeah, I think I have a couple of things. I was unable to attend the town hall meeting. Mike, were you there?
No, ma'am.
You wasn't there either. Do you know if any presentations were handed out?
No, ma'am.
Have you talked to anybody who attended?
There were no presentations.
Okay. No, no slides, no?
They made a presentation, but they didn't give out...
They presented, but no handout. Excuse me? They presented, but no handout. We gave a handout.
Okay. Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. So, whatever was given out at the town hall, I like to make sure I get a copy of everything so I can be up to date. Um, okay, the other thing that I have, and I know we have a work session tonight, but Mr. City Attorney, did you get my calls?
I did, and I returned the call, Commissioner, but I believe it said if you voicemail my cell after you, you voicemail the phone.
Okay, 'cause I looked for your number and...
Yeah, I thought...
I didn't see it. Okay. Um, okay, the other thing that I have, so are you gonna be able, Mr. Mike, to go into executive session?
That will be up to the mayor and the commission to, you're talking about, will I be up to sit in on executive session?
Sit in tonight.
If you all vote to go into an executive session, and there's something we need to discuss, yes, we can go into the executive session. But if it's the issue I think you're referring to, I think an indispensable party to that would be Mr. Davis, if he not here.
Well, I had several things I was gonna bring up. That's why a couple meetings ago, I announced then that I want to have an executive session tonight. And like I addressed with the city manager, when he told me Friday he would be on vacation, I told him that I had mentioned this two weeks ago, so he should have had a call to executive session so that he could be here for the executive session that I was requesting.
What's up, yo?
Um, 'cause Mr. Dern gave me some information earlier, Commissioner Dern did, saying that you wouldn't be allowed to, to preside in the executive session, so I'm trying to get some clarification. That when I say you, I'm referring to Mr. Mike.
He can, he can go in the executive session. I just don't think that he's gonna have the information. I think that the nucleus of the information rests with the city manager.
But as I said, I have several things that I wanted to discuss. Commissioner Dern, you want to elaborate on what you told me?
Oh, what I was saying was about executive session personnel, personnel policies will state that just the board, city manager, city attorney, and city clerk.
Okay. And so, Mr. Mike, considering one of those issues, do you have some knowledge about what took place last week? That's one of them.
Very limited.
'Cause I don't want to waste our time, and we go in there and, and we don't get the answers that we need.
Well, I agree, and I don't want to be involved any further than I've had to be involved, so I've already expressed that to Jerome. I don't know if I can answer every question you would ask, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Well, we're just, we'll go in the executive session since we, I had requested it last week, and we'll see what we, what we get. Thank you.
Commissioner, Mayor Protip? No, yes, we have Protip.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had the opportunity this past week for our annual summer trip to scout camp. We went, we attended Camp Rainy Mountain in Clayton, Georgia. Growing up, we spent more time at the beach than we did the mountains, so over these last few years, we've been able to go several places up there. I've enjoyed that, getting to experience that part of Georgia. I think we're very lucky to be in a state where we have beaches and mountains in the same state, a variety of places that we can enjoy. I want to bring something up. I meant to bring, I'm gonna spring this on the chief now, but we were talking about speed limit signs. We were going through Hiawassee, and they had one of those electronic signs that shows your speed, and I was, I thought was interesting, it's maybe the first time I've seen positive reinforcement for speed limits, because as you're going by and it clocks your speed and you're going out or below the limit, it said, "Thank you." So, yeah, I've never seen that before. Thought that was interesting, and I would like us maybe to check into that. I know we have some portable signs or portable speed detection signs that we use in the city. Thought that was interesting, you know, to let people know, "We appreciate the fact that you're obeying the law and helping us to keep our streets safe." Like to remind everyone, if you haven't checked into it, you know, summer's upon us. Again, I'd like to congratulate all our graduates here in Coffey County. Hope they're having a safe and enjoyable summer, and want to just put a shout out there for our city recreation department programs. We have a variety of programs that our Recreation Department is hosting on behalf of our city and county, summer camps, summer programs. I know I've got one that's doing the swim team. A lot of children are involved in that program, and they've already had, I think today was the second meet, so they're into it full-fledged. But I'd like to encourage y'all to take advantage of those opportunities. Unfortunately, due to my commitment to camp, I was not able to attend the meetings we had on the Tax Allocation District. Many of you probably like me, I've been receiving questions and comments about that. Most of the comments that I've received have been positive, particularly a lot of people are interested in the opportunity to bring in a Chick-fil-A franchise into the City of Douglas in our county. I'm surprised at how popular that particular part of the, of the presentation has been. I've had business owners contact me as well, and I would encourage everyone who asks questions and has an interest in this topic to get on our website, take a look at it, to ask questions, contact us. We'll be continuing to provide information as it becomes available. I think of particular interest, everybody needs to pay attention perhaps to the location, the size of the Tax Allocation District, 'cause I think that's yet to be decided. So, we'd like to get community input on those important matters that are gonna have to be hashed out. And just a reminder, the vote on that will be held in November, that first Tuesday, that regular general election day is when the citizens in Douglas will be able to, to make a vote on that. And, and then my understanding in talking with the city managers that the next stage, it would have to also be approved by the school board and the county commission as well. So, even if you don't live in the City of Douglas, and so you wouldn't be voting, representatives from the district in which you live, on the county commission and school board will also have to be involved in this decision, so please contact them and let them know where you stand on, on the, the potential vote and what your questions are, 'cause we want to make sure that we address those. Anyone who's got questions and has concerns about that, make sure those are properly addressed. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protip. My comments, hopefully it'll be quick. First of all, coffee with the cop held down at George Washington Carver Shopping Center at North Cut Soul Food Restaurant. Mr. Johnny Williams was there, the chief, had everything set up. Sunday morning, Mr. Williams gave me a call, and he was overjoyed with the turnout. He thought it was very positive. Matter of fact, he looked forward to doing it again. He said that there was a lot of exchange between the officers and the citizens, and he was like, "Man, that was just a good deal." And he called me first thing Sunday morning, I mean, somewhere around 9:00. And that's a good job. That's a good job. The next thing is, you know, remember the Touch Dunk Club? We get ready to raft off that boat, $10, so we can help out our Trojans, get out there on that gridiron, and help absorb some of those costs that those young men incur going through the football season. The TAD meeting, I loved the TAD meeting. It was interesting. Our citizens were engaging. They were excited and very supportive. Also, want to give a shout out to Douglas Now. I checked it, Sunday evening, there were over 6,000 views, I think roughly 6,600 views. So, appreciate you helping us get that word out there. The next thing is, one of the main issues that came out of the meeting is, a young lady made the suggestion that we hold another meeting, and this time, we're going to try to see if we can have... And this time, we're going to try to see if we can have the Board of Education there along with the county because everybody has a part in this coming to fruition. Then, if it passes on November the fifth, then we have to have two legal meetings. But we can have as many meetings, uh, informative meetings as we want to, as time permits and we can coordinate between all entities and the developers and the investor. I do wanna say this right here. I thought the meeting went very well. The, uh, citizens, uh, were there. They were engaging a, a little bit. Uh, one of the things I do wanna stress to our citizens is that we've been on this journey as a community for about two years or a little over two years. This is actually our second investment group. So, we've been down this road before. The first investment group, the numbers did not line up. They were about two-point-five million dollars short. With a little inflation, uh, a little bit of motivation of the community leaders, uh, sought out, researched, and found, uh, another investment group or developers. With a little inflation, that two-point-five went up to two-point-seven million dollars. So, this is our second bite at this apple. Uh, so I just hope that all the citizens take the time, come out to the meetings, do a little research, Google, anything that you can do. There's an old saying that says, "None of us are as smart as all of us." So, I've asked questions and questions and questions, but I really want everybody to come out and, uh, be, be engaged. We want an informed decision. The next thing is, is, it's the summer, swimming and water safety. Seems like all the little children in my, uh, family love to swim. A few years ago, we were holding our family reunion and my little nephew, he couldn't have been no more than about three or four, but he thinks he's a big boy. So, he, we at the city pool, he runs over there. Where does he go? It's right there in that deep end. I'm coming out of my sandals. I'm getting ready to dive in there to get him. But he has on this apparatus around his arms and his chest. That little rascal went down, but he popped right back up like a little bit. Boop! I was like, "Okay, that's okay." So, if you're going to be participating in any type of wa- of water activity, uh, swimming, fishing, boating, uh, jet skis, anything like that, please have on the proper protection. And having on the proper protection is having on the proper protection correctly. Having it on correctly, making sure that you read the instructions and make sure that those, uh, safety apparatuses are secure. That way, they can function. Father's Day, that's my day. Uh, been a good boy. Hopefully, uh, gonna get some good, uh, presents. So, uh, my daughters, you know, I'm the favorite parent. Yeah, I'm looking for big things, you know what I mean? I need some tennis shoes. That's what I need.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we gonna find out. We gonna find out. But other than that, that's all my comments. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Executive session.
We got a UC.
Did we have a UC?
UC.
Okay.
And executive session.
At this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No executive session. At this time, we'll take a recess and we will go into the utilities, okay? Let's take five.